I don't know, no feeling. Mr. Hunt was ill, so I don't know. I did not hear from him, but he's been really ill this week.
It's what the man said. We got a new timekeeper over there. It's five o'clock. At this time, I'll call the work session for the Perry City Council for April the 18th, 2022 to order. We do have four item three on our agenda, items for review and discussion. Item 3A is from the office of the city manager. 3A1 is department impacts when 24% of the local workforce works from home. Item 3A1A is the Department of Administration, and that will be Ms. King, to talk with us about what impact 24% of the workforce would have on her department.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm here as the mayor's secretary to talk about the impact to the Department of Administration, 24% of the workforce operates from home. This is a set from before, from a couple of weeks ago, more services might identify, meaning that's always public works, fire, police, as well as leisure services. I did a little research, and it shows that that the balance has broken through cultural and technological barriers that prevented work from home, from remote work in the past. However, it feels that 20% of the workforce could work from home two to three days a week, I mean 34 days a week, and the potential for remote work is not determined by the, it's determined by the task and activities, not the occupation. Being a vehicle maintenance is a portion of administration, the vehicle maintenance activities with the lower, I'm sorry, activities with the low potential for work, for remote work. Vehicle maintenance requires changing tires, changing oil, working with machinery, working on the equipment, working with wheels, which requires the individual to be at the dock site or on the site where the vehicle is located. And then the impact of this would be, I feel that the increase in the maintenance of calls and costs. So the more public forces out in the streets, the more police is out in the streets patrolling, so there's an increase of costs. The tires of the, have to be replaced early. Oil changes might need to be done quicker on a normal basis. Also, the low availability of parts. I feel like if 24% of the workforce is working from home, then it does that most likely cause of fewer people to be working in the reship store, fewer people to be working at the parts stores and the part house, causing, causing the cost for the equipment to go up, as for at least to increase the cost of the vehicle due to maybe shipping costs or having to purchase and not being available at the store, or having to purchase it either online or purchase it and have it delivered. As far as administration, my particular area is concerned, as it for the distance, in my particular area, the activities are, have high potential of workforce to for remote work. And that's processing, analyzing data, submitting claims, processing reports and so forth. And the impact of this, I feel like that, again, with public, more calls, more, I mean, if people are out in the streets, if they are out walking, it could be a potential to slip over something or uncontainment, as it can present more claims. Again, where they carry facilities, if the facilities are being used more often, then it could cause an increase of, again, more claims. People are using the facilities, so they have more claims to be submitted. So I feel like more claims would be done as, also the increase in cost of service or assistance, when we need to make sure that we have adequate phone support and to support the high volume of phone calls that are coming in, as well as pushing also clear a hand with the, the local carry and the carry point six apps that are currently being processed or taken into place right now. So briefly, I thought I feel like it will impact the Department of Administration in place.
Councilmember, questions relative to the impact? Mayor, refer to him.
Yes, in this notion of the impact, and the people that work from home, and the people that are working on the job, it would have an effect on a state. That the people at home, where they have everything available to them, say, I'm on a job and I need something, but it should be in your manual or in those books that you have in your office, are the people that work at home, are they able to go look it up on this old computer that they can relay back to you? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, as far as, we would definitely need to have good internet support, good internet, so where someone that's working from can access their files back at the office. So we definitely have to have some good internet.
Other question? Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you.
Item 3A1B is the finance department. Mr. Worley?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So is that like what our local workforce, the effect that our local workforce would have on the finance department? I kind of want to start with what hasn't changed. Here, is that better? Okay, that was, kind of what hasn't changed. So finance overwhelmingly deals with other professionals in our day-to-day work. We're dealing with other accounts payables clerk, accounts receivables clerk, folks that are sending us invoices, tax forms, invoices, registration forms, all that kind of stuff. Ninety-nine percent of that, we've already switched over to email and electronic form anyway, so we were kind of prepared for that. So really, there's been no material change in that aspect of our day-to-day work and working with our vendors and folks that pay us. So kind of what has changed? As soon as COVID hit, we definitely saw an uptick in increases for folks that wanted to either pay us electronically or be paid electronically. We still are overwhelmingly paid by check, and we do most of our payments by check. Most people, most of the local folks that we deal with want that. They're smaller businesses anyway. They don't have the support staff in place. Checks still work for majority of folks. However, ACH payments have increased significantly. Two of our biggest vendors, one of the ESG, was the first one to contact us and say, hey, we're working from home. If you send us a check, it's going to sit at the office. Nobody's going to get it. What can we do? So they were the first ones. They were kind of our game day where we set up ACH payments. We worked with Incode, our accounting system. We got it all set up with them. We worked with the bank to figure out how we can do it. And we have four or five folks that still that now get paid via ACH. We have had a lot more requests for that yet, so we haven't really rolled it out because it hasn't been demanded. However, as people start working from home, that is something that they probably will want to do, and we have that capability. But improvements really could be made. So number one, they're kind of one-off things through the process. We basically just check that, hey, this, in the AP process, we check off, hey, this isn't going to be a check. This is going to be an ACH payment, and it tells the system, don't cut a check. And then we, outside the system, go to the bank and make that payment electronically. If that became the preferred method or very popular method of payment, our system, Incode nine has the capability, but Incode 10 definitely has the capability. It's a very clean system where we can actually download a file and then upload it to the bank and automatically pay everybody out in one, in one swift motion instead of having to individually make those ACH payments at the bank. So those are some of the improvements. So considerations moving forward, you know, operationally, what would we and the finance department have to do, or what could we review to make these processes better? Number one, view our internal policies and procedures. For example, our internal controls, who has access and authority to that ACH system? Right now, we essentially aren't able to follow the same process that we do with our normal check-in process, because there's only three or four months to get done. So I feel that the policies right now still work. If they were continued to expand and get more prevalent, they'd probably have to review that. And our accounting system, I kind of already get on that. Incode nine has the ability to produce ACH remittance files. Incode 10 has a very clean and great way to do it. Since we're already scheduled to move to Incode 10 anyway, I'm hoping that maybe we'll just implement that when we get there. Another thing we can look at is what type of payments do we accept? So people are paying us. If they want to do it electronically, by far, the easiest way for them and us is with a credit card. You went back to credit card, you can pay a month. You can come in and swipe and take it over the phone. The problem, and it automatically flows to into our accounting system. However, credit cards are definitely the most expensive way to accept a payment. The way that fee structure works, you pay every time you swipe, you pay a set fee. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. I get that to you. And then you pay a percentage on top of that. So for small payments, you know, up to maybe a couple thousand dollars, that's definitely our preferred way to do it. However, we don't currently have a policy on what's our cap on that. Right now, somebody could call in and say, hey, I want to make a $50,000 payment to you guys. We can take it, but it's going to be very expensive. We do encourage them, hey, maybe let's look at a different type of payment. Send us a check, or send us an ACH, or let us ACH out of your account. That'd save everybody a good bit of money. But with ACH payments, they have their own drawbacks. Number one, an ACH payment costs five bucks, whether it's one ACH payment or a thousand ACH payments. So that's why we kind of want to move to, if we're making the payment, batch it them out. If we have a lot of folks that are taking ACH payments, because we don't want to pay five bucks per, we want to pay five bucks once and pay everybody. Another thing to look at, if people are paying us, most of the time, they use a third-party vendor. Doesn't cost us anything. I don't know that it costs them. It would cost us five bucks. There are a plethora of these third-party vendors, and everyone basically has their own credentials that we have to set up and log in and see. Right now, we've got probably five or six of those different companies that we accept payments from. The current policy is somebody calls and says, hey, we want to use this third-party vendor. We say, okay, send us the instructions. That isn't currently out of hand. We've got, like I said, we've got five or six, not too much to keep up with. If this becomes more and more prevalent, we start getting a list of maybe 20 vendors, we might need to look at, hey, which ones do we want to accept, and which ones are we going to refuse and say, no, go use a different vendor. And then the last thing that we can look at is, what do we accept credit card payments for? So not really the amount, but what are they paying for? Currently, you can pay the city online, and specifically online, you can pay your utility bill, your tax bill, any kind of court fee that you have, any building permits. You can pay all those online with your credit card. If you have miscellaneous invoice from us, however, you want to pay with credit card, you either call in or you got to come in. We don't have a way to interact with our website to pay miscellaneous invoices. I think it could be done. It's just currently we haven't run into that. However, as more and more people work from home, we will probably get that request eventually. You know, some AP clerk, somewhere is going to want to pay us and say, hey, all I got's a credit card, and I want to pay online. We don't have that capability currently. Probably would be easy to do. I haven't looked into it though, because it hasn't come up yet. I'm just trying to give you some examples of things that we would need to look into if work from home become a problem. That's all I have. I can answer any questions if I have.
Question? Are you going to come forward with the recommendation as to what payment, level of payment sources we should use in the future, using some, do you have some?
I would have to, I mean, it'd be a simple math equation. I would look at it, you know, basically look if an ACH costs us five bucks, basically do the math on what's the fixed fee plus the, the variable fee. It adds up to five bucks. What's the max? And that would be my recommendation. Haven't looked into it before because it's never, like I said, it's only come up a couple of times since I've been here, but those couple of times have all been in the past year since COVID started. If that's something you guys would like to do, absolutely, that'd be, that would definitely be a policy or a procedure I could record.
Do you want to take your credit card payment for $50,000?
Absolutely not.
Those are the kind of recommendations we need, because of the cost associated with it, we're looking at it, we probably need to think through the actual cost of various payments that we will offer, will not offer.
Is there a, I'll throw a one of those things through you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 3A1C is economic development department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So when we talk about economic development in the city of Perry, if 24% of workers and residents here will vote, we also need to consider the hybrid employees. Recently, in the Wall Street Journal, the communists from Stanford, MIT, and Princeton make the case that about 50% of all US workers are promoted about some of the time. So that's the hybrid model, and this is a new norm that's not going away. We see state agencies that have that, where the employees live, you know, outside of Atlanta, and they go to the office one or two days a week. And even the city of Perry did have the hybrid model until, from April till August of 2020, where we were home working and then in the office one day or a couple days a week. So for the city of Perry, we'll see more commercial activity, traffic, people going to restaurants, parks, and nightlife after 5:00 PM, assuming those remote workers end their day at 5:00 o'clock. And we have seen an influx of residents moving to Perry from parts of metro Atlanta and all over the country because of the remote work capabilities. The reason that they pick Perry is because of they have connections or family, but also the affordable housing and quality of life amenities is what really triggers people to decide to up and move. Nearly 5 million Americans moved since 2020 because of the pandemic, and another 18.9 million say they're going to move. So that's something to consider as you look at the remote capabilities and what people opt to do, where they want to live, et cetera. In larger markets, we're seeing less of the need of office space and large office complexes. Cities are actually giving incentives for those markets to turn those vacant office buildings into lots and housing for remote working. They also need internet capabilities. And for Perry, for Perry, we actually see the opposite of that. One of our challenges here is that we have some remote workers that don't want to work from home. So they're remote, and they're behavioral therapists, or they're doing something online, interacting on Zoom, that type of thing, mostly with mental health check services and Zoom services. And they called our office and said, hey, we want some kind of incubator co-working office space that's, you know, $500 a month, and that just doesn't exist in Perry. And some of the reasons they ask for that is, you know, it's too noisy at home. They've got kids running around, or they also don't have the internet that they needed. They're out in county or somewhere. So they looked at Perry, didn't have that. And one of them ended up promoting to naked because they do have that space. So that's one of the challenges in Perry. But another thing to note is that some of our main industries, our hospitality and retail, those jobs will never be remote. You actually need people there, like we discussed in farming. Some jobs just won't be remote, and that's okay, because we need people in places. We need people in restaurants. We need people at hotels and the new one coming online. So even if up to 50% are hybrid, we're not going to be 100% remote ever that I can see. And I think some of our main industries are more out to go robotics versus remote at this point. Some of the advantages of remote working is higher employee retention and satisfaction, stronger work-life balance, obviously a reduced commute time and transportation costs. Some employers give home office reimbursements, whether it's a monthly stipend or a one-time setup fee for all their office supplies, equipment, et cetera. And for companies that are hiring remote, it's really opened up an umbrella of an untapped workforce that they couldn't tap into before. Before the pandemic, people wanted to work remote, and only about 5% of Americans did. The pandemic allowed it to happen, and it's not going away. So some folks in the Wall Street Journal, historians and economists are calling this the fourth industrial revolution. I'm sure that'll be a trivia question in 10 years somewhere, but that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Of course, you may, Councilwoman.
I'm just curious, in your research about, it's people that are working from home, but they want to get out of their home this loud, and they're looking for a space. Do they have any particulars about that space? Do they want a bathroom in their unit?
Clearly, they need a bathroom in an office, but more of a shared space of, like, the behavioral therapist that called me and said, I just want a door I can close. I want a door I can kind of cry at, you know, Zoom call with my clients, and it's not working for me due to this internet capability. Some other people just want the portable space, and they want to get away from the kids, but they want a door that closes.
Do they want their own personal bathroom, or do they share?
I mean, it didn't get to that point, but most of the co-working, we work incubator spaces have like a shared conference room, a shared apron facility, even shared copier printers, you know, depending on the scale of it, some have a shared receptionist that they pay for. So they didn't ask further about that.
But I was just looking or listening to your comments about the hybrid. Does that double the cost for a company to have a hybrid system since, if you have, just like they're talking about, they don't have the internet service, and so the company has to go in and put, that is setting up the office at home. I'm assuming the company is responsible for the cost of the internet to do the business and probably using laptops, but would it be a double cost there of providing services at the house and also services at the office?
I mean, it depends on what type of hybrid model that looks like. You know, like for the state of Georgia, they're already paying their internet and office space, and I don't know what types of reimbursements they're giving their employees. Employees that work remotely can also write off a portion of their home office as an expense in their taxes. So I wouldn't see it being a double cost.
I was just curious if they're requiring an employee to cover those costs, because you can get reimbursed by the company and then take it off the taxes. It has to be, there's got to be one or the other. So I was just curious if it would be an increased cost on the company to provide the services, because you do, you are very dependent upon high-quality internet access, telephone service that's separate from the line that you have, could be that you have a cell phone, and that's not a requirement. So just, just curious, curiosity, one second. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3A1B is special events. Ms. Harper?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as far as special events go, we really don't have a lot of statistics to show specific to working from home. Most of the statistics that I was able to found through online research and through personal experience are more related directly to COVID. So obviously, when COVID was at its peak, events either were not happening or were very poorly attended. Since COVID has made a drop and special events have made a return, we've seen, you know, a huge amount of people showing an interest in special events. The ones that we have hosted have been phenomenally attended. So it's a little bit different from the special events perspective, looking at it from a work-from-home stance versus everything that has happened as a result of the pandemic. But with that being said, the people do want to come together, and of course, that's our timeline. Perry is where Georgia comes together, and that is what we try to deliver with special events. Since March of 2020, more individuals have been working from home, and typically, if you're working from home, you're having less interactions with your coworkers or friends, possibly even your family. So at the end of the workday, these people may be more likely to look for social opportunities that maybe previously, when they were in workforce, where they were surrounded by their peers, maybe they were exhausted at the end of the day, wanted to go home as their retreat. Now that outlook is completely opposite, where if they've been at home all day, maybe they've been with their kids all day, and now they're ready for a break. And that's their opportunities for something called micro events, which would be not necessarily things that the city of Perry is putting on, but things that are happening in Perry. So for example, the Victoria Nights that are hosted at Go De Gru, the Bingo Nights that are hosted at Hazers, those are micro events that people can look forward to at the end of the workday when they've been at home. Since the pandemic restrictions have been lifted, one of the things that I think we've all seen is a higher interest in attending events, definitely from our own city of Perry's special events standpoint, we've definitely seen an increase, not only in participation from vendors and interest from the general public, but also just in an overall demand for more events. So I think that as more people are working from home, as COVID restrictions continue to be lifted, the overall demand is just going to be for more things to happen, whether it's on the weekends, whether it's weeknights, and that's something that we can continuously take a look at. Thinking forwardly, you know, like I've mentioned, with the downtown restaurants and the shops that are hosting their micro events, those are great opportunities for them to have an economic impact while also serving their community. As of right now, the city of Perry typically only hosts events on weekends, so Friday evenings, Saturday mornings, sometimes a full-day Saturday festival, but we typically haven't ventured into the after-work during-the-week crowd. If that is something that Council thinks that we should trend towards, is something that we can look into. We could host events at the event center. We could host pop-up events downtown at the parks. As of right now, nothing is currently on the schedule, but if that is something that you guys foresee being beneficial to our community, it's definitely something I'd be willing to look into. And that's pretty much all that I have for you all. Do you all have any questions for me?
Question? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item 3A1E is the downtown. Ms. Harper?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as far as downtown impacts of the workforce working from home, I'm going to begin off with the positive impacts. So remote workers are typically well viewed, that would boost local spending in our downtown district, as well as investment opportunities for the downtown district as well. There would also be an increase in demand of working space due to the need for socialization for those that are working remotely, or just needing a quiet space to work in an office setting that may not be able to be attained at their own home. And then also, there's a focus on attracting downtown people to downtown through creative place-making, which is creating places where people want to be, focusing on the quality of life rather than the, they have the utility of a location. And these are all due to the fact that suburban and rural growth is happening. And these are all due to the fact that suburban and rural growth is happening with work from home post-COVID and there is being seen a decline in metropolis centers. Another positive impact is that business relocation opportunities from large office buildings in city centers are being relocated to smaller regional locations, such as something like downtown Perry. Some of the negative impacts that could be seen is that as more remote jobs are becoming available, that might take an impact on the current workforce that is available for retail or restaurants, further grooming problems for current staffing issues that some businesses are seeing. Additionally, there's a possible reduction in office space demand as the tech and e-commerce sectors are thriving. Some other Main Street programs have invested in thought about recruiting, creating incentives for remote workers to relocate to their downtown Main Street or downtown area, such as the city in Nebraska. That has been proved very beneficial to them. And additionally, we can evaluate and explore the needs for possible co-working spaces. As far as the work from home, their home offices may not be suitable, so they might be looking for a place to collaborate. Any questions?
Questions, Council? Interesting concept, the shared space. It would be something I think that, you know, I don't know if there's a market here for it, but I would assume that there's probably a lot of markets that could support that. Thank you. 3A1F is the Office of the City Clerk, this is one.
Good evening, Mayor Council. In our research to the city courts community, it was discovered that data is not available in this plan relative to the office of the city court. So they will not do a reservation.
Item 3A2 is considered a point piece in the East Perry Destination Art Department Committee. This is Bill Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Council. In your board pack is a memo from me following up on your concurrence at your March 14 meeting to set up an advisory board to help assist in the planning of the East Perry Destination Park. So as you can see, the administration mailed out a written invitation to all city residents that have a water or sewer account that are north of Perry Parkway or east of Perry Parkway. That's the basic service area for the park. And as you can see, we had 23 residents who indicated an interest to serve. The notice that went out to the citizens asked or requested two things. The first one was if they were interested in serving on an advisory committee. And then the second request was if they had any ideas on what they would like to have for the park. So we had a number of people who said, thank you, I'm not interested in advisory committee, but I would like to see X or Y, whatever case we be. The only requirement for participation in this committee is that you need to be a resident of the city. Administratively, we think it's important unless there's some technical reasons that if you're having advisory committees that ultimately may be determining how city monies are spent, that they are a resident of the city, so they have some stake in the game. Deciding factors, though, going through those who are interested was one subdivision of residents and then the second was time of application. In other words, the first person who responded, if there were a number of people in the same subdivision, that first person responded would generally get that position. So as you can see, the names there were recommending 13 members to be on the advisory board. In that, there are representatives from New Haven, Wood Neevo, Mossy Meadows, Wind River, Cottages, Houston Lake, Ox Landing, Greystone, Stone Gate, Lake Forest, Woodlands, Ox Nest and Summer Branch subdivisions. So I was very pleased with that because those who are from Mayor, where these subdivisions are located, that's a wide range that covers the entire area that we're talking about. Be happy to answer any questions. If council is generally satisfied with this, then I would request we just add this to your agenda tomorrow to officially appoint these members and then we'll proceed.
Questions, council members, relative to this advisory committee? It appears that you've gone a fairly wide net in that area. It seems like you've covered most of the subdivisions. Seems like it should work. Council member here, thoughts? I've got two over here to my left. Mr. Gilmore, you have consensus to put it on our agenda for approval tomorrow?
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work on that. It's going to become a reality. 3A3 is the new city hall expenditure.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, you would be pleased to know that the new city hall project is upcoming quite well. We have onboarded our construction manager, Ms. Harper, all states here in town. We've been working with our C M R folks and the architects. We are nearing completion of design for that project. Right now, tentatively, I mean, you have the notes in your board pack now on some of this, tentatively, we hope to have the maximum guaranteed price package you all and August for your blessing, if you will, to move forward with construction. They're looking at a construction timeframe that would take us into February, possibly March, with a February, possibly March occupation of that building with the bump that are going to go with it. So this fall and right line is what we discussed at this point in time. The design is a bit complete, looks fantastic. It's going to be very functional. We met numerous times, well-impacted. Parks are already located in there. Again, everything seems to be going very well. In these times, there are some considerations that the city looking to make. You have it for you in the board pack, a request to that. Given the extensive lead time for certain construction materials, if we were to wait to acquire these materials with a massive guarantee pricing for you, we would significantly push back the timeframe associated with completion of that project. You can see on here, on your board pack document, a general overview of the overall budget of the project. And then these three long lead items below that, doors and hardware, electrical components and light fixtures. Also, in order to get in there and ask to see what exactly is going on in the current conditions of the building, we'd like to do some exploratory demolition in there and start knocking some stuff down. As you all know, that building has undertaken, has undertaken many iterations over the years. So there's some things that our folks will find out prior to putting together a massive guarantee price renewal. With the budget we have, should you choose to concur with the recommendation of moving forward with ordering the three long lead items, it will be all within the scope of the budget as it's currently presented. Of course, it may change. We do not believe it will change very much. I think probably getting into it too much. But with our construction manager folks, our architectural folks, they've both put together cost estimates based on the current design and they're super close. They're about $80,000 on the overall project budget. So we think we've honed in quite well in what we're going to be looking at as far as expenditure goes with construction. And I would recommend this evening that we go ahead and place the orders for those long lead items in order to stick the schedule and be open by February, March next year. Probably kind of all over the place there, to have a list of questions you might have.
Questions, council members, or others? As I understand it, they're asking for permission to go ahead and spend money that we haven't approved yet. We know it's going to be in the ballpark of a number that's under the guarantees. And some of the experiences that we've witnessed here in town, much to all of our disappointment, the one thing that foreeens is waiting there is doors. They have these doors ordered forever, but they can't go in. So we know that those items are very hard and they have a very long lead time. So for us to be on target to have this ready in '23, it probably would need to go ahead in order this stuff to be utilized at the time of that you're going to operate. So is there any questions relative to that? Is council in concurrence moving forward with purchasing those items and letting them do some demolition work? Do we need to vote on that or can you just speak in concurrence?
Oh, your concurrence.
Yeah, unanimous in concurrence, just here. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I know you guys have really been working on that project and it really is coming together very nicely. Thank you for all the hard work. Item 3B is from the Department of Community Development. 3B1 is a Stonebridge sign request. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The Stumpbridge Residential Association has requested to place a subdivision sign on city-owned property at the end of Stonegate Trail. In your board pack is their request and the information they've provided. The sign would be similar to the one that's currently existing at the entrance to Stonegate Trail off of Geru, except that it will not have the stone base that's shown there. The square footage of the sign is approximately four square feet and height is approximately six square feet, so it aligns with the regulations and our ordinance. We do not allow signs within right-of-way. However, this property, the way it was donated to us, there was a road that was placed through it, but there's no actual right-of-way on that property. Our ordinance does require that a sign be at least 10 feet off of the edge of the road. If council agrees to approve this, home city property, staff would request or ask that you require a sign permit and also that the sign be at least 10 feet off the road. Mike Fox is here from the Stumpbridge Residential Association. We have questions.
Questions, Council, let us know. Mr. Gilmore, under the chair, city has thought on this. Would you like to share those with us, please?
Yes. The administration would recommend that council incline this offer for two reasons. First and major one is that we do not allow any other type of signage except our signage on our property. So if you were to open this up as an avenue, even as small of an impact it is opposed with this sign, my concern is you'll start having other folks coming in and requesting to do the same type of thing. First off, it will be for a subdivision, then it will be some type of direction, then it could be for business, so on and so forth. And since we're not in a position to legally control what the language on the sign is, I think you'd be establishing a precedent that would be a problem. Second concern I have is that this property was donated to the city as green space. And our policy, at least so far with green space, is we don't put anything in green space, even our own activities. And remember when this first came in, this particular section of land, it did come in with one caveat on the green space, that a street connection would be allowed and that a lift station would be allowed, but nothing else would be allowed to go in there. And so therefore, council, administration's recommendation would be to respectfully incline requests.
Any other questions or concerns?
I was wondering if the association has looked at other possible places, like maybe even on the edge of a private property lot that begins right there at the neighborhood. I was unaware that the city would have these kinds of concerns that Mr. Gilmore hasn't explained so well tonight. And I was wondering if there might, I know who owns the property, the first lot, or when you come in to Stonegate from State Heights, but I wondered if that person might be willing to have the sign on the edge of their property.
We have not checked with anybody about that project. I do think, you know, Mr. Gilmore's concerns are well-founded. As all of you know, it's innocent that some of our decisions are relative to doing what we think is probably the right thing to do. You know, but it always continues to be progressive. And I can see somebody coming forward and saying, well, you have Legis in the park. I'd like to put my directional signs in my business. That's about, I have to walk the way there. So I don't know how you decline that if we start setting this as a precedent. So I think those are very valid concerns. Any thoughts? So, Mr. Gilmore, what do you need? Do you need to vote on this tomorrow night? Or if you have concurrence on the recommendation from the district?
I think probably whichever way council is comfortable with. You have a request, you certainly incur to not take any action or deny. Or you could take a formal vote. My recommendation would be you just incur from a standpoint of following city policy and that's existed so far. And so therefore, the request would be denied or not processed.
Your preference? You're going to look for a formal vote tomorrow night? Okay, we'll put it on our agenda tomorrow night. I'd like to put a question. Appreciate you being here this evening. Item 3B2 is Perry Trash Dash, or Trash Dash, if I got it right.
Ms. Ford. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, we wanted to come to you all tonight, give you a little update on the Perry Trash Dash that was held on April 2nd, just a couple of weeks ago. So this is sort of a renewed community cleanup. It had been a couple of years since the city had hosted one. So we wanted to bring it back this spring and do it bigger and better than ever. So we came up with the Perry Trash Dash. And in this event, we ended up cleaning up several areas all across the city. It was a citywide effort. But the main areas that we cleaned up were New Hope, Oldfield, Creekwood, Roach Park and Sand Nine Boulevard. And Danny's got facts to share with you.
So I believe, first of all, we had 99 volunteers show up. That's the largest we've had so far since we started doing that. It's like you said, we haven't had one for two years because of the pandemic. So this is the largest volunteers that we've had to run this mall since doing these. We picked up 3,440 pounds of trash and 64 tires. The event was great. Everybody had fun. But there's some of the numbers, and I think it was a success that side of it.
And this event was only between 9:00 and 12:00 o'clock. So all of that trash got picked up in three hours, which is pretty good, I would say. So we also have some photos to share with you from the event and some feedback we got on Facebook. This family said they watched three moms pick up a bunch of stuff and the mayor cried that our city hosts events like this. So that was some good feedback we got on social media. You can see there's all different types of groups and families there picking up trash and getting up tires. Here's some other photos from the event. One thing I'll note that I was kind of surprised about was how many little kids there were that were so excited to get their T-shirts and get their rubber blogs and opening up trash. So we think it was a really good event. Have any questions about it?
What questions do you have? It was a great event. There was 99 people. I can remember the days when we had 10, maybe, if everybody showed up. So I guess putting it on social media and people wanting to get involved. So I guess putting it on social media and people wanting to get involved in the community, it was great being down there, seeing all the people looking very excited about going and getting their community cleaned up. And so you guys did a very nice job of that.
Comments, questions, council?
When do you plan to do it again? You going to do it on a quarterly basis, semi-annual, or your thoughts on that?
I don't think we've decided yet. It was a pretty big event, so maybe once a year will be good. Maybe twice a year we'll see. But it tended to work pretty well, kicking off the week before public works, spray cleanup. So it sort of kick-started the whole week of spray cleaning.
Great idea. Thanks again for all of our work and having us come together like you did. It does show a very little pride that people have in our community, so glad to turn out so good. Item three C is the Office of the City Attorney, three C one, is a discussion to amend the expense reimbursement guidelines. Ms. Newby?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, if you're going back with a copy of the proposed expense reimbursement guidelines and then for our personnel policy as well as any type of elected officials and your senior or senior appointed members of the city board, distinct if you have background of how we conduct to propose this for your consideration, having to look at updated dangers under the Fair Labor Standards Act to make sure that we were properly compensating employees whenever they were traveling for train or bus trips. And so out of looking at that issue, there were some changes that our HR department and I saw where there may be area for improvement. And so that's what is before you deny your consideration. It's just an expense reimbursement guidelines. I'll try and give you just a brief summary of what you have the document to look at. But basically, each of our, as part of their regular budget process, has already authorized for certain appropriations for training expenses. The policy would provide that, you know, that any type of training expense would already come to be appropriated. Expenditures would require or reimburse the expenses would only be with proper submission and documentation. It would also only be reimbursed if submitted for reimbursement in a reasonable time, but now later in the calendar days following the return from dating trip. Specific to travel and training expenses, to the city would reimburse health care expenses incurred for travel linked to official business of the city. And this would include like education and training sessions, conferences, conventions, or other business meetings that an employee, an employee can divide out an elected official, city manager, or appointed member of the city as our leader board, point to ten as far as due to business of the city. One thing that would be different is actually implementing the per diem for bills under this policy. So that would be addressed under the U.S. General Services Administration per diem rate. So basically, there's a website there that an employee would click on, would enter the date of where it is that you're traveling, and that would calculate based on that particular locale of per diem rate. And so that's what an employee would have for that day when they're staying overnight to calculate for their bills. As far as lodging, lodging would not, the lodging would basically just require that only expenses directed related for the hotel or motel costs would be reimbursed. If they're staying within the state of Georgia, there's an expectation that you would only would take with them the hotel or motel taxes that staff is for to make sure that his taxes are not charged to the city. So it's a pretty robust policy with a lot of different topics to point on. I know it's not very interesting material, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have anything that you've looked at that comes up that haven't been touched on.
Questions, council member? We'll just review reimbursement policy. I think it's timely. We have not had anything in writing or any answering questions about our policy, so I would applaud the community and the resources for getting this together and putting a document together that truly outlines having to reimburse expenses. So does this require any vote of the council tomorrow night?
So yes, sir. I would say there was one thing, one change that I would recommend in section four point two about travel arrangements. This says, say, the first two sentences are still in here, and then the events for free travel is allowed, but it would not see the per diem payout for the trip. But because it is for the per diem, that wouldn't have to be, you wouldn't have to submit receipts for that. So the language that refers to that would be taken out. And then I would also just call your attention to the excluded expenses that are in section six point two. Not that we had anyone necessarily trying to submit a request for reimbursement, but this would just give an idea of what is not related to the city business. So as long as the council is in agreement with moving forward with adopting the expense reimbursement guidelines, we would recommend that this come forward to your meeting tomorrow night as a resolution to adopt this policy.
Council member, any concerns with this policy? Question? Are you in concurrence to move to the agenda tomorrow night for the vote? John? Please have it on the agenda. Item three C two, there's a discussion of orders to amend the City Code, section one dash ten, general penalty continuing violations. Ms. Newby?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is just an amendment to one of our amendments section providing for general penalty currently under section one dash ten. This reflects notes from a conversation, from a conversation with one of our prosecutors who prosecuted a municipal court city code violation. So we would be amending the section to provide or find up to a thousand dollars for imprisonment of up to sixty days for both for any type of violation of city code ordinance. This is consistent with what's authorized under the municipal court jurisdiction in section four of our charter. Currently, the head section only provides or find up to five hundred dollars and imprisonment of thirty days. So this would just increase that to match the jurisdiction that we have identified in section four.
Questions, council member?
I do have a question on that. Sure, it's exactly what you're talking about, but I noticed when we had a code violation at a gas station about telephones, and we, you know, and I cleared that up about essential necessary selling of the work, you know, taking order. And then I noticed that that same vendor set up in that location again. Now, he was the repeat offender, but what about the management of the gas station that allows them to be out there? I wondered about that. Is there any repercussion for the management of a business that allows them to keep coming even though they've been told it's in violation?
I think we would have to look at that. I would think that ultimately, if the person is stealing themselves or sliding, and that case is small to municipal board, and each day that they continue to be in violation can be dated several minutes. And so if you have someone prosecute that for the whole, I guess, the whole fine or amendment vote, or each day, that's a different occurrence, that that would be enough to resolve the issue. So I know that's the answer specifically to your question about whether or not you can take action against the property owner, but we would have to look back and have the factory. I'm not sure that there would be something that you would do relative to the property owner, that they're not willing to actually.
It does seem like the property owner has a part to play, however, because they have basically given permission for these people to be out there property doing something that's in violation of the code. So it seems like they, they sort of have a part in it to play. It's just something I've wondered about, also when I was sitting.
Something we'll have to look into. We'll have to research that and determine what the facts can be taken, because it is frustrating, because they are a party to look at. But as far as this goes, as far as increasing the time and the time to align our charter, any questions about that? Do we have consensus to bring it forward for a vote tomorrow night? I assume that you will need a vote tomorrow night as far as the resolution.
Well, so this is just, this will actually be an amendment so tomorrow night would just be a first reading.
First reading of the ordinance.
But because we just wanted to bring it up for your discussion consideration to know while we're asking for the increase or not.
We have it there for a first reading tomorrow night if you would. Item three C three is approval of request for group insurance amendment for the standard insurance company to amend our short-term disability policy. Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, your board had the copy of the amendment in our short-term disability policy. This would just allow the change from an annual and simply system that we have to our PTO system that would be reflected in this amendment. And to allow core employees, U S on short-term disability, to use their PTO to make up the difference in income. We would recommend, as long as you're in agreement with, you know, amending your short-term disability policy that the core employee on your agenda tomorrow night.
Questions, council member? I assume this change is just a requirement based upon the changing of our PTO policy. Question? If you will bring it forward tomorrow night? For this being the form of the resolution?
It'll just be in the form of a, to a pretty good amendment.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Newby. Item four, council member items. I'm going to have to think of all of that today. Dr. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Cortez?
Just to stand there. That was pretty short, Ms. Newby.
Mr. Gilmore, anything that you would like to address for us to see?
Just one follow-up. Remember, we were talking about the issue of parking downtown. At four over two, you were report or a survey that is hardly did with downtown. I'm not sure I may have a chance to check and see, but I think the results of our survey gives you a very good idea of all the differences of opinion that there is, you know, downtown between the different types of users, which is what makes the parking issue more complicated. So I just wanted to make sure, if I'll have a chance to take a look at that and see.
Mr. Smith, anything more, assistant? Those are just being in condition for what you'd like to hear with us. Mr. King, anything? Mr. Orland? Mr. Wood, anything that you'd like to bring forward?
Yes, sir.
Kevin?
Captain.
Jason, anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Swan?
Yes, sir. I guess an update for some, but this past Saturday, we had our special needs community experience run. In spite of the weather, we got a good turnout. And I'd like to thank the mayor and Dr. Albert for coming out. And I didn't expect everybody to be out there and that downpour. I'm thankful y'all were thinking of us and, you know, and, yeah, we had a good turnout and we got some good insight from the parents, but then the special needs community, some more activities that are needed and more opportunities within the social lives and, you know, speak with other resource providers. I think the rain brought us inside so we could be more, communicate more, and I think the program will work better.
There was a very good program, and I appreciate you being flexible enough to move it inside because I know that group, I talked to a number of the parents relative to the changing and the disappointment that the kids would have experienced and not understood if we had not moved it inside. And so we did not disappoint, and I think that you guys did an absolutely wonderful job of being flexible and figuring out how do you move it inside quickly, and we did. And so we had a large number of very happy children on Saturday afternoon, and so appreciate you guys doing that. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to follow up on the trash dash updates. As Holly mentioned, in Pollock, Works Hill, strength cleanup in the city, the week following that Saturday, which was April fourth, fifth, eighth, and we collected two hundred and eleven tires, sixty-five tons of bulk, which was a hundred and thirty thousand pounds, and eighty-six tons of yard degree, which was a hundred and seventy-two thousand pounds. So that filled up forty open top thirty yard containers, so we had a successful evening.
Sounds like we have a good situation. I'm really curious where all these tires come from. I mean, we picked up sixty-something in one place, and you guys picked up almost two hundred and fifty, so I don't know where they come from. But thanks for doing it because they are my skin friends. No question about that. Just one, anything from the city clerk's office? Mr. Hick, anything you'd like to share? Ms. Harson?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Warden, anything additional?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Turpin?
Yes, one thing real quick. I just wanted to share an update on the programs that are in front of you. That is the most recent copy of our special needs publication. We tweaked it a little bit this month to also include some other department information and make it a little bit more well-rounded as a resource for either new citizens or people who want to learn more about Perry, potentially opening a business, because we are trying to put that more in the hands of people who could potentially be moving here as well as our own residents. And then also in front of you is the modified version of the door hanger that we distributed to the merchants last month before Food Truck Friday. Councilwoman Peterson asked for us to modify something to be given to our citizens. So if you, as a council member or any of our department heads, would like some for your interactions with the general public, please let me know. I did order a bulk package of that, and I would be more than happy to distribute them if you decide to go and interact with the public at any given time. It has already proven to be a great resource. I gave out over two thousand different points of contact at the Dogwood Festival this past two weekends. So it was a really great opportunity to get those things into people's hands and make sure that that information is getting out there.
Thank you. It is a very good resource for us to use. People have lots of questions about what's going on. I was with the command staff at Robbins Air Force Base and wish I had thought about taking this because that was a question they had, what's going on in Perry that we can circulate here at the base? And so we're going to send them a packet of information so they can fastly out to the air. Ms. Harson?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
I think that's everyone here this evening. Is there anything else that needs to come before mayor and council this evening before we adjourn? Our next meeting is tomorrow evening at five o'clock. We'll have our pre-council meeting with our regular meeting at six o'clock. If there's nothing else to come before, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this time. Motion is second. All of that goes into the table right here right in. We stand adjourned until five o'clock.